April 7th, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone please stand for our prayer. Gabe Henderson, can you lead us? Lead us in prayer.
That's what he said. Come on.
I'm a backslider and you gonna have either. Oh Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come collectively in positive thought of making Inkster a better, better place. Yes, we love Inkster. You know, we don't have a lot of money, but we got a whole lot of good spirit in this community and all that. So just help us along, and we know we're all sisters and brothers, and we gonna work together, and we gonna turn this world around. And this gonna start right here. You know they say that this little town of Bethlehem, 2,000 some years ago, I say this little town of Inkster, this where it started for all the improvement on this face of this earth. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Everybody remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Byron Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm, excused. Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
All right, all right. Everybody have a chance, look at the agenda. We added item J. Any...
We gotta remove something.
What's that?
We gotta remove that from... What's that? Is that up under the senator's agenda?
What's that?
We gotta remove that one that we saved.
Oh, yeah, that's item B. That's item B.
Okay, okay.
So we got item J. We added one item. Is anything else we need to do on the agenda? Councilwoman Rutherford, you were saying?
Some move.
They probably moved the second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes. Presentation, Senator Dana Polhanke, our Michigan State Senator, come on up.
Thank you.
Uh oh, I didn't know you. I know you need a little assistance.
Well, I'll play the story.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. So we had a very spirited coffee hour, my coffee hour in Inkster, two weeks ago, there's like 50 people there. One guy, you know, laughed, screaming, and boy, it was spirited. But anyway, the very next morning, I got in a car crash and this happened. So that's what this is. I appreciate airbags, they saved my life, and they also kinda kicked my butt as well at the same time. So, um, thank you for letting me do this legislative update today. There are some things that I think that you would want to know that we're doing in Lansing. So I am the state senator for Inkster. Also, I live in Livonia, and I represent part of Livonia. I also represent all of Canton, Westland, and Garden City. I am the education chairwoman of the Michigan Senate in the majority party, so which is nice. And that's the policy side, so laws affecting schools. I'm also the vice chair of the money side, the appropriation side, in the majority. So there's a lot of really cool things you can do with power. It's good to have power, isn't it? So one thing that we did, and it doesn't hurt that the chairman of the money side represents the city of Wayne, and I represent the city of Westland. So Wayne-Westland Community Schools tends to make out pretty well between the two of us. So one thing that we did last year, and then I'm pretty proud of, is we paid for Wayne-Westland kids whose families may be struggling a little bit to have free driver's ed. When I was a kid, 16, I got my driver's ed for free. Maybe some of you did too, it was just part of going to school. Well, it's very expensive nowadays. It's cost prohibitive, and not to mention, you know, ensuring a young driver is cost prohibitive. So the Secretary of State Benson and I would love to see this happen across the state, but they said do a pilot. So we chose Wayne-Westland Community Schools to do a pilot, and it was very successful. So I will be fighting to continue that again. That was, I think, $250,000, which in the scope of budgets is very, very small. I'm also, um, this is a biggie, and this is my baby. So I was also a teacher for 20 years, high school English teacher. So education's kinda my thing. So aside from a quality teacher in the classroom teaching your kid, I think the next best thing that would promote learning is small class sizes. So some, and especially in the early grades, K through 3, and especially in districts where a lot of the residents, maybe there's a high poverty district, okay? So what I'm proposing to do, because Wayne-Westland falls into that category, is I'm going to try to deliver $12 billion to a pilot, including Wayne-Westland Community Schools, and we're gonna have class size caps for K-3 students in Wayne-Westland Community Schools. So no more 25 kids in a classroom. They're gonna be 13, 15, something like that, that's manageable, so the teacher can have one-on-one with the kid. You know what I mean? So, I said, you said it, you're the very first people to hear that, so I hope I can come next time and say it happened. I'm gonna fight like hell, heck for it, sorry. I met with the governor's people today, and I said, "This is my baby, so we're gonna do it." And then I met with the superintendent of just instruction, I said, "This is my baby, and we're gonna do it." So we're gonna hope to do it. So other things that are important to us is we wanna continue the universal free school meals, breakfast and lunch, and we also want to make school safety and mental health a rolling budget item, instead of like a post-COVID era thing. We think this is important to continue forever. So, um, another thing we did, which I, around schools, which I think is important, is last year, February 13th, the child safe storage gun law took place. So it's a very serious law, and I'm pretty proud of it, but if you, if a child, a minor in your presence, doesn't have to be related to you, takes a weapon from your coffee table or your truck or whatever, and even brandishes it and gets caught, there's a stiff penalty, and it goes all the way up to if the child kills themselves or another, you get due process, but you're gonna maybe do time for up to 15 years. Very serious, because kids and guns don't mix, and the parents and adults have to be responsible and not let them have access to the guns. So one thing that we, that I fought for is for every kid, I suppose if they're young, they get like a flyer in the backpack, goes home to the parents, says, "Look, you can get these free safe storage gun locks, you gotta keep these guns safe." So we're gonna do a whole education campaign on that, because people don't know about Moving on from education, there's a couple things we did in lame duck of last year. Lame duck is a period where a bunch of bills tend to get rammed through, and I'm not gonna lie, it was a complete disaster this year for my party, which is the Democratic Party. We had one Democrat who decided she wasn't a Democrat anymore, and huddled up with the Republicans, and killed 250 bills.
Wow.
Nine of which were mine. Now, mind you, the whole Republican side didn't show up either, so, but Republicans plus one made it, so everything just, just was a disaster. So even though 250 of our senate bills died, 100 and some change, House bills came over to us on the senate. And we sat in our chairs, God bless Cory Booker for his like filibuster, my gosh, he talked the whole time, well, we sat the whole time. We sat for 29 hours straight, no sleep, and we pushed buttons. It wasn't like a Booker feat, but we stayed, we stayed, and we, I'll be danged if we didn't pass over 100 bills and, uh, over, over that 29-hour period. But some of them, I'd like to talk to you about today. There was the child safe storage notification, statute of limitations for criminal sexual conduct indictments in the second and third degree. It used to be if you're, if you, you know, were a pedophile, and you had a crime, a criminal sexual conduct against a child, if that child, if that child or the child's parents didn't get you within a certain number of years and didn't like have it whatever in you it takes to say, "I'm gonna go report this," there was a statute of limitations, after which you aren't allowed anymore to bring charges up against a pedophile. That's gone now. Okay? That's gone now. So, so, so pedophiles beware, okay? There's no statute of limitations anymore. Amen. And then, let's see, some of the economic things that we did, which I think are really When Governor Snyder was in office, if you filed for unemployment, he took the number of weeks that you could get unemployment from 26 weeks down to 20. We put it back to 26, okay?
That's good. Yeah, that's good.
And then we also took it from 362 a week to 614 a week, okay? Now, it's ramping up to 614, but I think by, in the next couple years, it will be up to 614. So that's unemployment where if you're unemployed, you can actually, you know, live. Another thing that we did is there was a ballot initiative to provide, and the voters of Michigan were denied the right to vote on this by a really no-good process called Adopt and Amend that my Republican colleagues did, and it was found unconstitutional by the Michigan Supreme Court. So, long story short, in the beginning of this year, we, um, we made it happen, okay? Cause they, my Republican colleagues adopted it, and then they completely gutted it, so it was terrible. So what you have now is if you work for a business with 40 or more employees, sorry, with, if you work for a large business, sorry, with I think over 10 employees, you get 40 hours of earned sick time, guaranteed to you. Okay? It, oh, I'm sorry, you know, I'm, my number's here. Let me say that again. If you work for a large company, you get 72 hours of earned sick time. That's better. So a large company would be 10 or more. If you work for a small company, that's 10 or fewer employees, you get the 40 hours. That's what I meant to say. So no matter what, if you get sick, your employer has to pay you, uh, to stay home for whatever reason for either 40 or 72 hours, period, is the law. Minimum wage is also going up to $15 an hour by 2027, so that's gonna go up as well. There was also one that I liked, it's about housing. Housing is just, it's not affordable, um, at all. So we made a law that says landlords can't deny a renter based on source of income. So if you have a housing voucher or something like, we're getting rid of that kind of discrimination. I thought that was a good one. And I think, I think I've said all I wanted to say about legislation. I have a, my, my last coffee hour was in Inkster, but you should follow me on Facebook if you're interested in coming to my coffee hours. And all this stuff, like, that I'm telling you now, I post on my, I do all my own social media. So every social media post is me actually doing it. And sometimes I get in trouble, cause I answer the trolls, and then that gets me in trouble. But I try not to do that. We all try not to do that. So, but, um, it's @senpolhanke, S-E-N. My name is spelled P-O-L-E-H-A-N-K-I, Dana with a Y, D-A-Y-N-A. So Facebook, my Facebook on that is very active. I post every day. And then something good that I'm doing with United States Congresswoman Debbie Dingell is we're having a town hall in Canton on April 21st, and that's a Monday at 5:30 at the Summit on the Park, I think it's called. Summit on the Park in Canton, April 21st at 5:30. This is where you can kind of unload about President Trump and the things that that administration is doing right now that, that I'm not a fan of, and you may also not be a fan of. So she knows a lot more in that space, because she flies to DC every week, I go to Lansing. So that's the remainder of my comments. I don't know if you do questions, sometimes people do, sometimes they don't.
Anybody have any short questions?
I don't know. Yes.
Because of what the federal governments are doing regarding the Department of Education, how does that affect the public schools and the charter schools?
Right. Charter schools are public schools, so just wanna always make that clear. Well, you know, I'm a fan of WWE wrestling, but I'm not a fan of Linda McMahon, who has no business at all being the Ed Secretary. So, but she was tasked with ending the department, and she's going to, President Trump, when he does a "I do by declare" an executive order, they don't mean anything. Only a few people can make laws. Me, as a state legislator, and Rashida or Debbie Dingell as congresspeople, like, we make the laws, he can I hereby declare all he wants, but unless Congress does it, then it ain't gonna happen, okay? But what they can do is kill it with death by a thousand cuts. They can do things like, one thing she did is, she said, "These grants that you were supposed to get, um, that you were supposed to have," like, what's, what's, let's say March 25th. March 25th at 2026, March 25th, 2026, you get, was the deadline for these grants. On March 25th, 2025, at 5:00 PM, she said, "I'm changing the deadline date. It's no longer March 25th of 2026. It's today, and oh, by the way, it's after 5 o'clock business hour, so it already passed, so I just took all your money." So they can do it that way, and they are.
Is that evil?
That's evil. So now, um, all of it. It's all, all of it. So, um, so I try not to fear monger, you know, I'm not going on, "They're gonna take your social security," you know, until I have strong evidence that they're gonna take your social security or Medicaid. So I'm in the wait and see right now. So right now, I'm in the wait and see. Our money is locked from the federal government, and it's billions, until I think July 1st. After July 1st, they're gonna start over, and they can change distribution formulas, they can cancel grants, they can do whatever they want. So after July 1st, I wanna see like if the money goes away, or if the way they disperse it changes, and then we're gonna have serious problems. They said it won't, but I don't know that for sure.
All right, anybody else? Well, thank you, Senator.
Okay.
We appreciate you coming. All right. So we got a consent agenda.
Approval of regular city council meeting minutes from March 17th, 2025.
Second. They probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions.
Approval to appoint Gwendolyn Rogers to the Beautification Committee.
Some move.
They probably moved the second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Approval to appoint Phyllis M. Long to the Beautification Committee.
Some move, second.
They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion I would like to make, please.
Make it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, since the Compensation Commission has concluded their determinations, and it's been certified through the clerk to remove the compensation members from the Compensation Board, um...
Any second?
Second.
They probably moved the second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion I would like to make, please.
Make it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, since the Compensation Commission has concluded their determinations, and it's been certified through the clerk to remove the compensation members from the Compensation Board, um...
Any second?
Second.
They probably moved the second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion I would like to make, please.
Make it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, since the Compensation Commission has concluded their determinations, and it's been certified through the clerk to remove the compensation members from the Compensation Board, um...
Any second?
Second.
They probably moved the second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion I would like to make, please.
Make it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, since the Compensation Commission has concluded their determinations, and it's been certified through the clerk to remove the compensation members from the Compensation Board, um...
Any second?
Second.
They probably moved the second, discussion.
All the members of the...
All the members.
All the members, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Okay. We have no ordinance tonight, so we're on the new business.
Consider approval for a Juneteenth Celebration Parade. Event date, Saturday, June 14th, 2025. Event hours, 12:30 PM to 1:45 PM. Small parade with floats, bands, and walkers. Location, Hamlin Drive, Inkster, Michigan. Street to close, Hamlin Drive from Michigan Avenue to Inkster Road.
Some move, second.
They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Next item, I think needs to be taken off the table.
Consider approval to purchase five vacant parcels, case LD25-03. The parcels are located between Metal Dale Avenue and John Daly Avenue. Parcel IDs noted, in the amount of $10,500. Deanna Moss, CFO of Armstrong Development Group, would like the land to build single-family affordable housing, residential homes.
Remove, take off the table, Mayor.
It's been a motion to take it off the table, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
I'm second. Thank you.
All right, so it's off the table, so now we consider, we don't need to reread it. Do we have a motion to approve the sale? Do we have any motion? Is the applicant here? Do we have any motion on item B? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, item B fails. Item C?
Consider approval of issuing a replacement deed for 26115 Dunning, Inkster, Michigan, legally described as noted, parcel ID noted, to Habitat for Humanity.
Remove to approve.
Support.
They probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval of the administration submitting recommendation to the city council for accepting of a bid for the construction of the Senior Wellness Center at the Dozier Recreation Center. The administration is submitting this item to council for their review and consideration.
Remove to approve. Second.
They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Application Request. The application proposes to break the project down into four phases. For funding purposes, each phase will require a separate NEZ certificate application with a different LLC name.
Some move.
Second. They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It passes.
Second.
Consider authorization for the city of Inkster to solicit applicants from developers to participate in the Inkster Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2025 through 2026 to redevelop, rehabilitate foreclosed properties assigned to through the first right of refusal.
Second. They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approving or denying a special land use 25-03 to allow for automobile service station and to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B3 General Business Zone District at 2617 Middlebelt Road. Site is located on the northeast corner of Middlebelt Road and Michigan Avenue. This item was tabled per the applicant request at the March 3rd, 2025 city council meeting.
Okay, so that means we need to take it off the table, and then we need two separate motions. One for automobile service station, which is a gas station, and one for the liquor, beer, and wine sales. So any motion to take it off the table?
Support. Second.
They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, it's off the table. Now we need a motion on the service station part.
Some move. For the service station?
Okay.
Did we have to say the whole thing?
Um, no, you don't have to say it.
Support.
Yeah, to allow the service station. So I believe moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Now we need another motion on the liquor, beer, and wine sales.
I'm sorry, is there a nay on that?
I'm sorry, was it a nay?
Yeah.
No, I didn't hear a nay.
I don't hear any.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the liquor, beer, and wine sales, special areas?
Move to deny, Mayor.
Second. They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It fails. I mean, it passes.
Consider authorizing the administration to enter into an agreement with Giffords Webster for Phase 3 of Greenway Trail for design and oversight. Adopt the resolution attached for the request for funding for this project.
Some move.
Second. They probably moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider planning commission recommendation to deny the application for zoning amendment to allow vehicle repair facility major in General Business District.
Some move.
Now what are you moving?
Oh, it just says in there, recommendation to deny, so I make recommendation to deny.
Deny, okay. It's been properly moved, any second?
Support.
Properly moved the second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, passes.
Consider approval of street closure, streets to be closed, northland between Carlisle and Beach. Date and time, April 12th, 2025, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Block party coordinator, Yvonne Moore, community in the community, Easter egg hunt.
Some move. Support.
They probably moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. All of participation.
Good evening, good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
So first, I just want to congratulate just the support of everyone on this Saturday. We had a Project Prom event where we collected well over 100 prom gowns, shoes, jewelry, um, and there was an outpour of girls that came in and said yes to the dress. And so it was such an amazing event. We'll be doing a raffle, calling the girls this week, where they will be selected to win free service of hair, makeup, and nails. So it was an amazing event. I am just truly thankful of everyone who came out and supported, and you know, things like this, we need to continue to support, especially for our youth. So now these girls don't have to worry about anything for prom, they have their dresses. They're also able to get free alterations if they need them. So it was a really good cause that put a lot of smiles on a lot of girls' faces. What we have next, if you guys have kinda noticed, we have this trend of moving and getting in shape and just, you know, having a lot of fun. we have this trend of moving and getting in shape and just, you know, having a lot of fun. And so we've been doing hustle classes on Thursday over at the rec. They've been successful, everybody's popping their fans and having a, you know, a lot, a lot of fun. Um, and so that's something that we'll continue to do first and third Thursdays at the rec center, uh, between 6:00 and 8:00. Cost is $5, so make sure you guys come out. I do have tickets for the next class, that'll be on the 17th. Another thing that we started doing that is back by popular demand is Trap Bingo. Everybody's been waiting for Trap Bingo. So April 18th, get ready, Trap Bingo will be back. Tickets are $10, and you can purchase those tonight if you want to as well. And last but not least, we are doing a class Zumba Blaze. And so we actually have one of the dance participants who, she teaches a class over at LA Fitness, and she wants to bring her entire class here to Inkster. And so she'll be bringing all of her members. Um, this will be a paid course, so the funds will continue to go to community initiatives as well as just drawing positive attention to the city. Um, so we're really excited about that. And the first class will be April 24th, and moving forward, second and fourth Thursday at the rec. $10, time is at 6 o'clock. So you guys, make sure you come out, have a lot of fun, support these events so we can continue to have these things. Um, and also, you know, just to continue to have that positive energy for the city. Um, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, we, we strive to, to continue to do. Um, and actually, last business is the parade. As we all know, the Memorial Day Parade will be coming up on May 26th. Uh, we are still looking for participants. Uh, we are really looking for veterans as well. So if anyone knows any veterans, particularly in the city of Inkster, that we would love to acknowledge. Um, anyone has any additional performances or things of that nature that you would like to see in the parade, please let me know. Um, I do have forums here tonight, there is an online forum as well. Um, and also, we are collecting donations, as I stated, because, you know, these things are not free. So, you know, we would love, you know, to have everyone just, you know, support in any way that you can, even if it's not monetary, if it's something that you can donate and support, you know, towards to make a successful parade. And that's about it. Anyone has any questions? All right.
Stephanie Richards.
Hello, hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello, thanks for having me. I am your Western Wayne Community Liaison for the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, for those who don't know me. But I just wanted to come and say thank you for all of your support, for welcoming me into your community. I have had the pleasure of being involved now in several different of your events, and it is just a blast. Councilwoman Richardson, thank you for allowing me to come out and speak at your community event and give away some gun locks and talk to your residents. It was, it was, it was eye-opening, for one, because you have some of the most engaged community members in your community, and I found that very refreshing. You know, you go to some places and are really involved, but your, your residents are really thoroughly invested in what happens in Inkster, and I found that to be quite refreshing. And so thank you, you know, you have a wonderful police chief, so you don't need us at all for law enforcement. We just like to support in any way that we can. But I just want to continue to extend our partnership. I look forward to being a participant this Saturday, coming up at the Easter egg drop, and I'll be deputizing some kiddos, and I look forward to seeing you all. So thanks for having me again.
Thank you. Yvonne Moore.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And all our citizens of Inkster. So I have three things to let you know real quick. Um, you know, that Saturday, April 12th, is our annual for unity in the community Easter egg hunt. We're looking forward to everyone showing up. We need all hands on deck. I mean, we're gonna do three-legged races and sack races. So we're gonna need some judges out there, and we're gonna make sure to be tie a couple of you guys' legs together and see how good you can do it too. So, but, um, we were, we are looking for a lot of things. I did ask for something, but I'm, I'm afraid he, he gets it for me, you know, Mr. Bibbins. So, you know, I know it's short notice, but, you know, you know. But you can handle it though, Mr. Bibbins. I know, I have faith in you, so, you know. I wanna tell you that, well, as far as the, well, you know, that's because I want the grass and stuff done. So, and all the weeds in the back for, for the park, but, you know. Got you, you got me, you got me. So, yeah, so, um, our next thing I wanted to let you know was that, um, we're still taking donations for candy, but the mayor just told me a really good thing, and I, I would've hugged him and kissed him, but I don't want Ms. Jennifer to get mad at me. Because he just told us that he purchased, you wanna say it, Mayor? How much candy you give us?
80 pounds of candy.
Yes, yes. But considering we're looking for 500-plus kids, and we're gonna actually, so if you still wanna give that donation for candy, we can use it. And we'll still probably end up buying a few little prizes. Um, I did wanna ask a question, because I don't understand stuff sometimes. I'm a little slow, so I'm gonna ask a question. So, um, I thought that it would be a good idea to do the marshmallows in this little thing, this little bag, and tie them up with the?
You can talk about that after the meeting.
I did, you know, because you can only put two in, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny. So I mean, you know, that'll keep them from, getting them off the ground. Because, you know, I know that.
You don't have to discuss, you're in charge.
Huh?